It's May, the final two weeks of school as we record our program for the Board of Education Board wrap-up for May 2013. As we record our program today, it's hard to believe that in just a couple of days, the gentleman to my left, Dr. David Pennington, will be giving another commencement address to another graduating class. And what a quick nine months it's been, Dr. Pennington.
We were, yesterday, one of the things we did before our board meeting is we did a retirement reception. And we have a very large group of outstanding educators that are retiring from the Ponca City schools. And as we were talking, one of the individuals told me that they can remember their grandmother telling them years ago that the older you get, the faster time goes by. And so I don't know if the school year's just gone by fast, or if it just is indication that I'm getting older, because it sure seems like that just yesterday, we were having the, you know, the August Board wrap-up, talking about the beginning of the school year. And, you know, now here we are, in about eight days, our kids are going to be out for the summer, and we're going to graduate on Friday. So it's gone quick.
You know, I know that during the next months, you'll reflect back on what kind of a school year it's been, but, you know, we, it appears, at least anyway, that we had a good school year. We have a good group of young people that are going to college and graduating and society. And so, you know, off the top of my head, I can't think of anything that was really monumental bad-wise, but a lot of good things happened.
You know, the reality is, and obviously, when you pick up a newspaper, or you talk to somebody on the street, or church, or wherever, we all have a tendency to focus on the negative. But the reality is, is that of our 5,300 kids, the vast majority of those students come to school every day and do the best they can. We have some that make mistakes because they're young people. And young people are going to make mistakes. They're going to do things. You know, they just, so, you know, we had our common year of various things that happened, that happen every year. And sometimes you see something in the paper, and you go, oh, no. But the reality is, it's the kind of stuff that happens in every school across the country, you know, all year long. Obviously, I think probably what most people, when they think about the 2012, 2013 school year, Sandy Hook is going to be what dominates that, and that tragedy, and that unfolded. And, you know, you go back to those last, that last week of school, and how nervous people were, and how anxious they were, and how concerned they were about safety. But we were able to get through that, and we've been able to kind of put that behind us and move forward. Obviously, we're going to do some things, hopefully, as in the next couple of years, as we renovate our facilities to make them safer. You know, I think when you filter everything out, and you sit down, and you look at it, you know that there's lots of things we can do, and there's lots of things we will do. But, you know, as long as we live in a society that allows individuals to purchase automatic weapons, that you can put a 30-bullet clip on, somebody who is mentally unstable enough to desire to do something like that has the potential to harm a lot of people. And, you know, we're going to have to figure that out as a society. I don't know that we're going to do it next year, five years from now, but, you know, we have to, we have to look at that, and we have to, we've got to find a way to balance the constitutional rights people have to own firearms. But we've also got to find a way to balance the right that we all have in society to be safe and secure. And I don't think we're all going to carry guns, and I don't think that that solves the problem, anyway. And, but it's, you know, I think that that's an issue that's not going to go away. You're going to hear a lot more discussion about it. And the reality is that, you know, we're probably going to see something like that happen again. I just, you know, we always hope that it's not in our school system. Our kids have been very good about reporting to adults things they hear and things they see, and we investigate all those. And sometimes they have legs, most times they don't. So I think that would be the, you know, the dominating thing would be the Sandy Hook incident.
I wanted you to be able to have some time on our show today to talk about the financial stability of our school, and obviously, with the state legislature winding up here in the month of May, you're going to know more information. I know you talked last night, and have recorded some programs for our viewing audience, but if you could, maybe a little bit of what you talked about last night, as far as our finances stand right now.
Well, we know, in general, what the budget's going to be next year. And we're going to have, in the Common Education budget, we're going to have $74 million more dollars. And obviously, you always appreciate anything the legislature's able to do, but I would be less than honest if I didn't say that I was very disappointed. If you look at, if you look at the dollars that we're appropriating for 2014, which is $7,114 million, and you go back and look at the, at fiscal year '09, which was the year that the recession hit, that year, we appropriated $7,124 million. So our state revenue is, I think, within 2%, or our state appropriation budget is going to be within 2% of what it was in 2009. So our state economy has come back. Now, is it where everybody wants it to be? No. I mean, you know, we still would like to have lower unemployment. You know, there still is uncertainty in the national economy. But our state revenue, the amount of money the legislature has said they're going to appropriate next year, is 98% of what it was in 2009. But the Common Education budget is about 20% less of what it was. Again, when we're, when we went through the recession, it was very understandable that as state revenue decreased, that education funding had to decrease. But I think most people would expect that as revenue comes back, that education funding would come back with that. And that's not happening. The appropriation for Common Education is going to be about 10% to 12% less than what it was in 2009. It's hard for me to understand that. But the real issue, from my perspective, is of the $74, $75 million that the legislature has set aside for public education, they're only putting $21 million, or that's the plan right now. We don't have an official budget, but that's what's been rolled out. Only $21 million of that is going to the Funding Formula. And that's the money that we use to operate our schools on a daily basis. That's the money that pays teacher salaries, that's the money that pays, it pays for support personnel, it pays the gas bill, it pays the electric bill, it pays for, buys, it buys paper, and all the things we do to operate our school. Back in 2009, that appropriation was $2,300 million. This next year, it's going to be $1,846 billion. So, you know, again, I don't know what, I don't know why. You know, I can't sit here today and tell the viewers, there's a logical reason why that happened. The only logical reason has to be that there are other functions of state government that the legislature decided to appropriate money to. I'm sure they have good, what they believe are good reasons for that. But I think that, again, when you look at, when, and we survey people to death in this state and in this country. But, you know, every survey in the state of Oklahoma has, for years, has said the same thing, and that is, is we want to have well-funded schools, we recognize we need to educate our children at a high level. And you can't do that without money. I mean, I wish you could. I wish I could sit here and say, hey, you know, we can do it for, you know, for less than what we're doing it for now, we can offer a high-quality program. But the reality is, when you don't have money, eventually, there's a price to pay for that. As I told the Board back in the spring, we knew this year was going to be a difficult year. And so we had built our fund balance up to allow us to continue to operate our schools at the same level. We're going to be all right this year, fund balance-wise, we're going to carry over about 10%. But because of the actions of the legislature, which means that, we're probably only going to see an increase in state aid of about $200,000, which is, I mean, obviously, any $200,000 is better than nothing, but it's not much better than nothing when you're looking at a $34 million budget. So it's a, it's a big deal for us, and so, you know, what we're looking at now is, we're not only looking at next school year, but we're looking into the future. And because if we don't do anything, our fund balance will drop to $1.2 million next year. And that means that when we start looking at the 2014, '15 school year, we would be looking at a significant reduction in force to get our budget back under control, to get our funds, so that we, because we have to have that savings account. Because if we don't have that, then you see, then we would, you think about where we would have been when the recession hit without a fund balance, we would have been in a real, we'd have been in real trouble. And, you know, you can't always anticipate what your needs are going to be the next school year. We don't, we don't know today. We might have 200 more students in the Ponca City schools next year. That's going to make it necessary for us to hire more teachers. Well, those extra teachers you hire, you hire with your fund balance money. You hire, use that savings account to pay for that, because the revenue those students generate for you is going to take about a year for you to get that. So the bottom line is, because of the actions of the legislature, we're going to, we have 22 vacancies right now, and we are not going to fill all of those 22 positions. We're not eliminating 22 positions, but we're going to do, eliminate some programs, and then there are some jobs we're not going to refill right now. We'll keep them open, and when the money comes back, hopefully, we'll bring them back. But the, but the bottom line is, while most people, most students won't, you know, school won't be any different for them, there are some programs that we're not going to offer in the Ponca City Public Schools next year that we offer this year. Woodshop is a good example. You know, we, Pat Young has taught woodshop for us for 30 years. And that's a program that, that enrollment is small, those classes have to be small, because, you know, they're working with equipment, you've got to be able to supervise those kids. But we're not going to replace Pat. We're not, our woodshop program is going to go away. And, you know, I think that's a shame, because for some kids, that was an important program. But when you're, when you're looking at the situation we are, where you're trying to preserve as much money as you can, so that you can operate it in the future, you have to look at those programs. We're going to eliminate driver's ed. We're going to take the people that are teaching driver's ed right now, and we're going to reassign them to those positions. No one's going to lose, going to lose a job, but we won't be offering driver's ed in the school, during the school day anymore. Now, is that a huge thing to do? Well, it's not. I mean, if you look at, we're probably one of the few schools in the state that still offer driver's ed during the school day. And it was a program that we had eliminated here, but we brought back, I think, in 2002 or 2003. But still, it's a program, and there were some students that maybe they couldn't take driver's ed in the summer, or they couldn't take it after school, or they couldn't afford to do the cowboy drive. There's lots of reasons, but we're going to, we're going to eliminate that program. And that's something that, that I have no intention of ever bringing that back. Okay? There are some spots that we will not fill. We, we have a, in our, in our high school, in our career tech program, we have a position that we've had a retirement in, and it's a, it's a great class, it does some computer graphics and that kind of stuff. It's something I think that a lot of kids enjoy, but, you know, we're not going to fill it. And so as we continue to go through the summer, as we continue to have people come and go and those kinds of things, there may be other programs that that, that happens to. And again, you know, unless you're in computer graphics, well, you don't think about that. You know, we're still, we are still going to maintain our core programs. Class sizes will be higher, and especially at the secondary level, at the elementary level, they're going to be higher, and we may find ourselves in a situation next year that when, when we have classes that have, you know, more than 20 students in a class, we might not hire an assistant. We've done that in the past, but we may not do that. And it's not because we don't want to do that, it's because, you know, we have to manage the budget that we have, and we have to do that until the legislature steps back up and gives us the funds necessary to operate our schools. And I think that's something I want our viewers to really, I really want to make that point. If, if it took us $2.3 billion to operate our schools in 2009, why would anybody think that we can do it now for $1,840 million? And the other part of that is, is enrollment is up. There's about 30,000 more students in the state today than there were in 2009. So even if we had the same dollar amount going into the state aid formula that we had in 2009, we would have less money per student to spend. And I just, it's been, it's frustrating, because, you know, I've never gone to the legislature and talked to any member that says, I don't think education funding's a priority. But, you know, the reality is, that with all the decisions they have to make, they, for whatever reason, for right now, education's not the priority that I think it ought to be. And, you know, when, what typically happens is, you know, we'll, so next year, something, you know, we'll get a phone call from a parent, and maybe there's not a program that they, they wanted, or something, and then they'll always ask the question, well, what are we, what can we do about it? Well, what you have to do about it is, you have to, excuse me, you have to let the people that you've elected know that education funding is a priority. You know, for the last several years, we've elected lots of people to the legislature, and their primary issue has been, it may have been that they were anti-abortion. It may have been that they were concerned about the Second Amendment and gun rights. It could be that they were a physical conservative, and they wanted to cut taxes. It could be that they were concerned about gay marriage, and, you know, what are we going to, you know, how's Oklahoma, what kind of laws is Oklahoma going to structure to deal with that? And those are all important issues. Okay? And they, and people, you know, again, we're a, we have a, we're a diverse country, and people have different opinions about that stuff. But when somebody runs for the legislature, and those are their main ideas, that's the things they run on, well, that's what they're going to focus on when they get to the legislature. And so if we want funding for our schools to be a focus of the legislature, then statewide, we either have to convince our existing candidates, our existing state representatives and state senators, that education is the number-one priority of our community, and funding for our schools is the number-one priority, or we have to elect different people. And that's the only, that's the only way that it works. And again, if I remember, if I were running for the legislature, and I ran on a platform that said that, you know, I think that fixing our roads and bridges is the number-one priority, and I got elected, then I assure you that my focus would be on fixing roads and bridges. Because that's, that's what I ran on, that's what I told my constituents was important to me, and that's why they elected me. What's happened the last few years is, all these other issues get all the attention, and then as a byproduct, everybody says, well, I, our schools are important. So it's kind of an aside, but it's not their driving force. And so we have to either help our current elected officials become passionate about funding our schools, or we have to find other people who will be that way. You know, I don't think it's intentional. I don't think that Governor Fallon, or President Pro-Tim, yeah, right, or Shannon, that's the Speaker of the House, I don't think they woke up and said, hey, I think we're going to give education less money. You know, they've got a budget in front of them, they know what they ran for, they go into those. And the thing that, that people don't understand, and I know it's frustrating for members of the legislature, but typically, what happens is, the governor, the governor's representative, the governor generally doesn't sit in those meetings, but then Speaker Shannon and Pro-Tim Bingham, they sit down, and they have discussions about the budget, and they, they look at these dollars, and they look at what was appropriated the year before, and they, and they look at how much money they have, and they start distributing the money. And then generally, they go back to the House and Senate, and they say, this is the agreement, now you guys pass it. But what's, and so you'll have House and Senate members tell you that they're not a part of the decision-making process. And that is partially true. They don't sit in that meeting with the governor and the President Pro-Tim and the Speaker. You know, when Senator Myers was alive, and he was the chair, Appropriations Chair, you know, we talked, he told me, he said, look, he said, I may be the Appropriations Chair, but, you know, I get to go to a high-level meeting, but I don't get to go into that meeting where the big three are. They come out and they tell me how they want me to appropriate this money. But the thing, where the decision is really made, is in each body, they have caucus meetings. And those are meetings where the, where the various members of the parties, they get together and they talk about things. And they talk about issues. So they'll talk about funding in those caucus meetings. And you'll have some people in those meetings who, you know, their, their big deal is, they want to reduce spending. How do we cut the size of government? You've got others who want to maybe build roads and bridges. You've got somebody else who thinks the Department of Human Services needs more money. You've got somebody else who thinks correction needs more money. So the Speaker and the President Pro-Tim listen to all that stuff, and like anybody else, they, they try to draw consensus, and that's the position they take with them when they go into those meetings. The only logical conclusion I can draw is that the consensus out of that meeting was, we need to do something for education, but it's not our number-one priority. And that's why that we end up with $74 million new dollars to spend in 2013, 2014, as opposed to $100 million, or $125 million more dollars. Or instead of, you know, if the priority would have been that we want education funding to be back to where it was in 2009, then education funding would be back to where it was in 2009. And that's where we are.
Let me ask you about, and I'm not sure whether it's a rule or a law, but we've heard about it for the past several years, is teachers are hired, and if you don't have enough money to retain those teachers, the last ones brought in are the first ones out. Does Ponca City ever have to deal with that, or have we been able to keep our funding to where we haven't had to let teachers go?
We've been very fortunate. We haven't had to do, implement a reduction in force. But that doesn't mean, and that's one reason why we're taking steps this year by eliminating some positions and not filling others, so that we don't have to do a reduction in force this time next year. Because if we don't, if we don't, if we're not proactive now, if we don't, and, you know, we're not going to solve this budget problem in one year. You know, the bottom line is, to kind of help people put their head around this, we've received $1.8 million less every year since 2009. So, for, from, from the state of Oklahoma, there were a couple of years in there where federal money kind of filled that gap for us. But our state funding is down $1.8 million every year since 2009. So, you know, I mean, you just think about all that money that, that if we wouldn't, you know, if we were funded at the same level we were in '09, that we would have had over the last several years. But, so we don't have that money anymore. So we have to, in order to be able to not do a reduction in force, we've got to, we've got to eliminate our spending to reduce that 1.8. So we're going to try to get some of that back this year, so to make up for that loss of revenue, like anybody else. You know, you don't have, you've got your budget at home, you were making $100 a month, for some reason, now you're making $50 a month, you've got to reduce spending by 50 bucks a month. So we've got to reduce that, we've got to find a way to reduce that hole of $1.8 million. Now, it can happen a couple of ways. One way is, we can get more money from the legislature. The $21 million that we think we're going to be appropriated, it comes out to about $200,000 for Ponca City. So we got $200,000 more dollars in state aid, so now that 1.8 million deficit is now 1.6 million. Okay? So, you know, we're going to try to cut into about half of that this year, and maybe we can cut into half of it next year. Or the legislature can come up with some additional, you know, maybe next year, the, you know, the message is loud and clear to them, is their home over the next seven months, that education funding is a priority in this state, we want our schools to be fully funded, we don't want our kids in elementary classrooms with 26, 27 students, we want to be, we want to be able to offer robust programs at the high school. Those are the things we want, and we want the legislature to fund those things. And that's, that's the message they have to hear. Because if they don't hear that message, then that's not what they're, they're not going to take that to the Capitol. And again, we, we just expect that education funding would be a priority. And I, and I can tell you, you know, if you gave truth serum to Representative Vaughan and Senator Fields, they'd probably tell you they're tired of hearing from me about this. You know, they're tired of the emails that I send, they're tired of me, when I go to meetings, asking them about the budget, and why we're not getting more money, and, and they need to hear that message from other people. They need other people in this community to make it very clear to them what their priorities are. And because they are servants. I mean, both those, those are both good men, okay? And they both have a servant's heart. And I think they both would believe they're doing what they were elected to do. But they need to hear from not just teachers, and not just school administrators, they need to hear from parents, and grandparents, and community leadership, that we've got to fund our schools. And one of the most aggravating things in this budget, from my perspective, is there's about $30 million of this $74 million that's going into what they call State Department programs. In the State Department budget, you have, you have the state aid, and then you have what they call a program budget, and this is all the various little programs that are offered across the state. An example of a program would be Educare, which is a program that you find in Tulsa, Oklahoma City, Tulsa County, Oklahoma County, that funds, that the Kaiser Foundation joins with school districts, and they build facilities that provide early childhood education. So they'll, they'll serve children's birth through three. And sometimes they'll have four-year-olds in that building, too. And so they, so they kind of use from state, some school district money and some private money. But that Kaiser Foundation gets from the state, they get a $10 million assistance. The state sends $10 million to the Kaiser Foundation to help pay for these programs. And that, that's a nice thing to do. They're going to get $500,000 more this year for those programs. And, and again, those are good things, but that, but that money doesn't, those state dollars for education should benefit every district in Oklahoma. They shouldn't just benefit Oklahoma County and Tulsa County.
What's the response to that when you question legislators?
You know, what they would, that's something that, that, you know, they would typically, that's out of their, what they would say is, I wasn't a part of that decision. There's going to be, this year, for the first time, there's going to be money allocated in the program part of the budget, about $2 million, that's going to go to help pay the cost of Teach for America teachers. If you don't know what Teach for America, it's this really great program that serves, that serves urban schools. And these are people that have, that have graduated from college, and they go teach someplace for three years. They go into, they'll go, they're all across the country. In our state, they're in Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and they go to high-poverty schools. And these are kids that graduated from, you know, Harvard, and Yale, and North Carolina, and just maybe OU, OU, but they're all around the country. And they're, they're really bright kids. They're not, they're not educators, they don't have any interest in doing education as a career, but it's a, it's kind of like the Peace Corps, it's a service thing. And so the school district pays them a salary, okay? But they also pay, I think it's $5,000, to Teach for America for every teacher they get. Well, that $5,000 has been coming out of the school district general fund budget. You know, you, you want to hire a Teach for America teacher, then you take out of your general fund budget, not only that person's salary, but $5,000. That's kind of the way the system works. If we want to do something here, you know, then we take it out of our budget. Well, they got a line item, and so now the state is going to pay that Teach for America fee for those school districts. So basically, they're supplementing the budget, general fund budget of Tulsa, Oklahoma City, to pay for Teach for for Teach for America. That's a good program. I mean, but, you know, that's, that's a benefit that those two districts are going to get, that, that other districts across the state don't get. I don't, I don't think they should get a supplement. But the other thing that's probably the most aggravating to me is, the state superintendent, when she came into office, had, had some initiatives. One of those was a third-grade reading, that we were going to retain anybody who was not reading on grade level at the end of the third grade. The teacher leading, changing the way we evaluate teachers. And then the final, and the full implementation of something that started under the Henry administration, which was the ACE remediation, which was that our students had to pass, high school kids got to pass four out of seven EOI tests to graduate. And school administrators have fussed, because they didn't give us the money to implement those programs. And so what, what they're going to do, and I, I don't know the number yet, but it's somewhere $20 million, that's going to go into those programs. Well, those are good things. But, you know, the, I think that probably the first, and the, and the argument is that, that, that we've got to fund these reforms. And I would agree with that. If you're going to mandate something, you ought to pay for it. But the problem is, they're forgetting about the other mandates that we have. The class size mandate from 1017, which is a big, huge mandate that we've ignored in this state for the last three or four years. And, and so that, you know, my argument would be, fund that first. You know, let's fund, let's fund the commitments we made back in the 90s. Let's fund those commitments first. Let's get our, let's get our, let's get enough money out there so that we can get our class sizes down, so that we can hire back teachers, so we can get our class sizes where they need to be. And then when we get that done, then let's fund this other stuff. You know, and again, those are the things that are frustrating from my viewpoint. And they're things that are going to be frustrating for parents. Because I don't think there's any parent that, that wants to see 26 kids, 30 kids in an elementary classroom. And, and it really, it's discouraging, and it's disappointing. And those who are conspiracy theorists would say that, that, that what this does eventually, by getting class sizes up and eliminating programs, is it, it makes charter schools and private schools look more appealing to parents. Because they can go, they can go to private school and have lower class size. So, you know, I'm not a conspiracy theorist yet. I may be someday, but I'm not there yet.
Who writes your commencement address? Do you, do you do that?
I do that myself. Well, you know, really, I don't, my address is pretty short. My role in graduation is, is to confer the class, and, and that's what I do. I decided a long time ago that people weren't there to hear from me. You know, they-
They want to see their kid walk-
They want to see their kid walk across the stage. And the thing that I like that we do here, we give our students lots of, you know, we, our students are the dominant speakers-
Right.
-at our graduation. And, you know, those kids really say great things. You know, if you, if, if you'll listen to what they say, you know, I'm always, you know, if I, if, if you're beamed when you're up there, I would be beaming, because I'm so proud of our class president, our student council president, our valedictorian, salutatorian. You know, they, you, they, those speeches are well thought out. Some of them are long, some of them are short. Those kids are scared to death. You know, if you're up there on the stage, you can see them, their hands are shaking. But, but they do a great job, because they always speak from their heart. And I, and I think that's what people want to hear. They want to hear kids speaking from their heart.
Eight o'clock at Sullen Stadium.
That's right.
Thank you, Dr. Pennington.
You bet.
That's this month's Board Rabbit.